For the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting was advertised in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. I would like a motion to approve the agenda for the caucus meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman, a pass moment and a second by Councilman Larson. All in favor by show of hands, and it passes unanimously. At this time, we do not have any council member discussion. We'll go into item number six, which is executive session. I'll read out the items we are going to discuss in executive session. Under South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, receipt of legal advice where the advice relates to pending, threatened or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege of UPF litigators-ultra-processed food litigation. Number seven, pursuant to South Carolina Code Section 30-4-70A2, legal advice related to discussion of negotiations incident to proposed contractual arrangements. Real property located in unincorporated Beaufort County known as the North Widgeon Tracks. Under South Carolina Section number eight, under South Carolina Code 30-4-70A5, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion or provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body. Economic development related to Project Cloud at the Hilton Head Airport. Number nine, under South Carolina Sections 30-4-70A2 and 30-4-70A1, to receive legal advice on matters covered by attorney-client privilege and to discuss issues related to the employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline or release of a person regulated by public body, county council and administrator roles and responsibilities. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Go move.
Motion by Councilman Bassman.
A second.
All right. All in favor of the motion to go into executive session?
Yep.
By show of hands, there may or may not be items to arise out of executive session. So we will now adjourn to executive session, which is behind this dais downstairs.
Downstairs.
I'll start them.
This is the meeting of the county council. I'd like to call it to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's take a minute here to, first of all, thank the sheriff and all the colleagues here for allowing us to be here tonight. I don't know if anybody knows it, but somebody that we all, a lot of us know for a long time, passed away last week, Tom Riley, and we're gonna have a mass at the Holy Family, 1:00 tomorrow on Hilton Head Island for him. As we gather here in service to our community, may we be guided by wisdom, compassion, and integrity. May we listen with open minds and speak with respect, always remembering the trust placed in us by those we represent. Let our decisions be thoughtful and just, rooted in a desire to build a stronger, safer, more united Beaufort County. May we work together regardless of differences for the common good of all who call this place home. May this meeting be productive, our intentions be pure, and our actions be honorable. In His holy son's name, I say amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, thank you.
At this time, we do not have any business, anything to talk about from executive session, but we will reconvene it at the end of this meeting for the rest of what needs to be done in executive session. All right, this meeting was advertised in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilman Cunningham. Do we have a second? Councilman Dawson, we have a second by show of hands. The agenda is approved, and we do have one council member on line, Ms. Paula Brown. We have minutes from March 18th and April 25th. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Taverneck. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Second by Councilman Cunningham. All in favor of approval of the minutes by show of hands, and those minutes are approved. All right, we have an administrator's report. I think we have a lot of, lot of news today.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council. First, I'd like to start with some introductions and recognition. First, we have introduction of two new hires. First is Rebecca Payne, if Rebecca's here. So Rebecca recently joined Beaufort County as a FOIA specialist in the Communications and Accountability Department. She's a native of Lancaster, South Carolina, and she holds a bachelor's degree in paralegal studies and brings over 14 years of combined experience in public service and legal support. Her background includes five years at the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, five years at the magistrate court, and three years at the Beaufort magistrate court. She also worked at the law firm Morgan &amp; Morgan, where she further honed her legal and client service skills. Rebecca's passionate about organization, accuracy, and accessible communication, and she's excited to contribute to Beaufort County's commitment to transparency and public trust. Outside of work, Rebecca enjoys gardening, woodworking, photography, traveling, and reading, and she looks forward to working with the council, staff, and serving the citizens of the county with distinct dedication and care. So, welcome.
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 Would you like to say anything?
You can talk about your woodworking experience.
I'm an amateur. I'm just a hobby right now.
Thank you.
Glad you're here.
We also have Jacqueline McMorris. So, welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you again. Yes. Jacqueline recently joined the county's, also as a FOIA specialist, in the Communications Accountability Department. She's originally from the Hudson Valley in New York. Jacqueline has made South Carolina home for the past 10 years and brings a strong background in public service, including over seven years as a judicial assistant in the magistrate court, and additional experience in legal and security roles. She holds a master's degree in forensic psychology, as well as a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and sociology. During her undergraduate studies, she conducted research focused on wrongful convictions, deepening her commitment to justice, transparency, and accountability. With strong communication organizational skills, she's excited to return to public service and support open government and meaningful public engagement. Outside of work, Jacqueline is an avid reader, board game enthusiast, proud wife, and a dachshund mom. Okay. She looks forward to working with county council, staff, and contributing to transparent effective service for the residents of the county. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something, Jacqueline? Would you like to say something?
Yeah.
Okay. Get your picture for us.
Just thank you all for having me here and welcoming me back. It's been a very warm welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know every single one of you. So, again, thank you for the welcome back.
Mr. Moore, before they sit down, would you explain to the public what FOIA stands for and what these ladies will do?
So, it's Freedom of Information Act, and they will be working on the staff to process inbound Freedom of Information Act requests, process those, and then return those back to the citizens or anybody who requests documents from the county. And they'll be working with our legal team as well on that.
Thank you. Another one of those acronyms, yeah.
All right. Thank you all. Next, we have a, we have a special employee recognition for 20 years of service, our own clerk to council, Octavia Evans. She's here. She's got her family here, so.
She's got her family here.
Yeah, come on up.
She said I earned this one, why you gotta walk up here?
I'll say, when I look at Octavia, I would've never guessed 20 years. So, Octavia, as you all know, is a senior administrative assistant in the clerk to council's office. She's been with the county for 20 years now. Summary of job duties, you all know all this, but for the public, she prepares and types routine confidential correspondence, schedules and coordinates meetings, produces various brochures and web-based designs to promote and inform employees, officials, and the public using PowerPoint and Publisher. She evaluates office operations, makes recommendations for changes in order to maintain office productivity and efficiency. She attends meetings, many meetings, and prepares meeting agendas and packets and assists with presentations at various meetings, which is all transparent to you all, the work that goes in to produce an agenda like tonight. And it's amazing what staff does to make this happen. Something unique about Octavia to share publicly, she's a loving wife of 17 years and a mother of three. Happy Mother's Day belated. She's also a very proud graduate with both an associate's and bachelor science degree in business administration. Creativity excites her whether she's crafting something by hand, giving words of encouragement, or using her best talent, writing short stories. Octavia's very independent and loves being a team player, and we love having you here, Octavia. So, thank you.
Yes, we do. Can you introduce everyone?
Come on up, Octavia.
I've got something to say.
Oh, I'm sure you do.
So, that's my husband, Sean, my nephew, Vary, my sister, Tiffany, my youngest daughter, Honesty, my niece, Sarie, my daughters, Ariana, and my son. That's my oldest child, my senior, Devon.
You should be proud of your mom standing right up here.
That's my, my oldest child, my son, Devon.
It would've been so much easier just to come up here the first time.
Okay, but what I wanted to say, I always sit over there and say, if I ever had this opportunity, what would I say? So, I wrote it down, very short, but I literally grew with this company. I graduated from high school. I had all three of my children. I got married, but I also lost my mom and one of my fathers. But in doing so, I got two degrees, and I still celebrate it my 20 years. So, I'm thankful for all my past and my present coworkers and my bosses, just for making this opportunity special for me. So, again, thank you.
I'm sure she has a great resource for short stories working in this position that she has.
So, that's all of our recognitions and introductions. I would now like to move to discuss the Highway 278 project, which was discussed at the State Infrastructure Bank today. Under item six, it was a public, published agenda, public meeting. There were three projects to be discussed that involved intergovernmental agreements for transportation projects. The first one was Charleston County, which was the Mark Clark Extension Contract. The board voted to approve a resolution to terminate that contract, and my understanding is that was by mutual agreement between the parties. The next was the York County Exits 82 and 90 IGAs. The board had reviewed a letter of May 1st and voted to reject that proposal and leave the matter open for discussion with York County within the next 60 to 90 days to develop a new resolution. Lastly, they came to the Beaufort County US 278 project. There's some discussion on each of the projects, and I'll elaborate a little bit. Some of these comments were common to the York County as well as the Beaufort County, but Chairman White did thank the county delegation, the town, and secretary and staff of DOT for discussion on the projects. His comments were, it started as a $282 million project, is now estimated at $499 million for the entirety of the project. He stated that the board understands time-sensitive nature and the safety and access concerns. They also understand the benefits of the bridge to the town of Hilton Head Island, to the county, and the state for a vibrant economy. He pointed out that the 2024 sales tax referendum would have added 80 million to the project, and that the infrastructure bank has committed 120 million. He also noted that the town and county had passed a joint resolution, worked hard to get that through at the last moment. Our, the concerns that were raised were that the, the bridge only has lanes going in one direction, and the contract had the scope of the bridge with lanes going in both directions. He stated the board understands the needs and time concern with the bridge, and they had some concerns that the board is left with passing an IGA along with some provisions that they believe are in violation of the IGA. They did state that they would let the lawyers meet to work with county staff. The chair then asked for a motion to approve or disapprove the joint resolution request. There was a motion and second to reject, and the vote was unanimous for rejection. During this discussion, the chairman stated they will keep the project open. However, and that's important to note, the Charleston County project was terminated. The other two projects are open, including Beaufort County, and give the county time to meet with the CIB in the next 60, 90 days to come up with a resolution that will satisfy the needs. And again, he stated it's not a termination of the contracts, but the board can't have a change in scope, was kind of his last state. So, that was the, the vote was to reject the proposal from the joint, and the joint resolution from the county and the town and discuss with us. So, there's really no action for you all, just informing you tonight, and if there's no objection, I know Senator Davis is here, and he's had some discussions with the CIB, so if it's acceptable, he can come up and make some comments.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I found out about both the meeting and the decision at the same time, at noon today, when Secretary Powell, who was in attendance--
when Secretary Powell, who was an attendance, called to advise me that a meeting had been held and that a decision had been made. I didn't know there was gonna be a meeting. That's the first thing I'll point out. The second thing is, Mr. Moore is correct. It was not a rejection in the sense of terminating all further discussions or consideration of the project. That's what's happened to Charleston. It did not happen to York County. It did not happen to Beaufort County. So, that's the second thing to note. The third thing would be that even though Chairman White said within 60 to 90 days, I spoke with Secretary Powell, it can't be 60 to 90 days. They have to make a decision in regard to whether they're gonna do the replacement of their first span going from Moss Creek to Pinney Island independently, or they're gonna do it in the scope of this larger span all the way to Hilton Head. They can't wait more than a couple of weeks in that regard. Okay? So, we are on a very, very tight timeframe there. Chairman White understands that. He is willing to meet with the county to discuss the issues he had with the proposal. In a matter of days, he'll make himself available. I've talked with Mr. Moore about that. As I understand it, the part to the proposal that caused it to be rejected were, one, the priority of the various tranches of money. You've got county money, you've got CIB money, and you've got DOT money. And so, one of the issues that needs to be discussed and clarified is, when does that money go hard? When is it committed and in what priority? There was some pushback against the proposal that had the county money going in last. Okay? So, I'll identify that as one of the concerns that they had. There was also questions in regard to specificity on what is it going to cost? I mean, a little better estimate on what it's going to cost, primarily because a portion of this, as you'll recall, contains a design-build component that encourages bidders to come up with proposals that will allow for eastbound access on to Pinney Island. That creates some ambiguity in regard to price that he would like to have clarified, primarily because he wants to have clarified who is going to be responsible at the end of the day for costs overruns. And that responsible party, whoever it is, how are they going to access those funds? And are those funds readily available? And then, thirdly, in terms of process, and this is something that, you know, lawyers tend to get preoccupied with, but it matters, whether you're going to amend the IGA in which he feels like there are some constraints based on precedent and guidelines, or renegotiate the IGA. Okay? So, it may sound like semantics, but it makes a difference to the CIB board when they're making a decision. And one of the reasons for this is, any decision made by the CIB that's final, and today's decision was not final, so it doesn't get taken up by the Joint Bond Review Committee. But any final decision by the CIB will be taken up by the Joint Bond Review Committee, which has plenary authority to make whatever decision it wants. The CIB is extremely reluctant to hand something up that it feels like is going to be reversed or challenged by the JBRCC. Those things that I just mentioned, if they can be discussed and clarified and then put into a resubmitted proposal, my strong feeling is that it would be favorably considered. I spoke with Chairman White. He wants to figure out a way to move this project forward. He wants that to be the impression coming out of this meeting. Same with Secretary Powell at the DOT. I spoke with the governor's chief of staff. They're also very invested in making sure this project becomes a reality. So, there's some work to do in a very abbreviated period of time. But I don't want the feeling in this, of this council to be that this was rejected and the project is dead and the $120 million has been reallocated to some other projects. That is not the case. It is a question of having those four items I mentioned addressed and then put into a resubmitted proposal, at which time, I would strongly encourage that notice of that CIB meeting be provided so that I and the other members of the delegation can appear and argue on your behalf. Okay? We're ready to do that. We're prepared to do that. I know the members of the CIB board. I've worked with them. I've had conversations with them. I think every member of the delegation has something they can bring to the table in regard to making this a reality. And so, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. But those are the takeaways I got from extended conversations this afternoon with Chairman White, Secretary Powell, and Trey Walker in the governor's office.
Let's open it up for questions.
I just have one. Did the chairman give you any indication of when he'd be available for that first meeting, Senator?
Within days.
Great.
And I've already suggested some times to Mr. Moore that I think are fine. We're talking about it in a matter of a couple, three days.
Any other questions?
Just quickly, Senator, I appreciate your comments and your reporting. And I know you behind this 100%. Question I have is, you talked about two things. One is the cost. And one of the problems we had in the past has been, every time we delayed, 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 the costs just continue to escalate. So, I'm concerned about that. And the final concern I have is, what kind of timeframe do you see this happening at the worst-case scenario with all the processes that are going through right now? How soon you think, on the worst-case scenario, that this bridge can go into construction and move forward?
You know, there's, I appreciate that question. There are just too many variables because you've got to get it finalized. You've got to get it finally engineered. You've got to get Fed approval. You've got to then have the RFP process. You've got to let it out to bid. You then have to have contracts. You have to figure out what the supply is for contractors out there because, you know, there's a lot of highway projects going on right now. You know, you've got the, you know, potential for NEPA challenges. You have the potential for collateral, you know, third-party challenges to the process, which I'm not aware of. So, I don't think you want my worst-case scenario. I'm gonna give you my best-case scenario, which I think is in two and a half to three years. You're gonna see. And that's very rough. But I want to emphasize that Secretary Powell's in a predicament. He was told several years ago that that first span, as you're going eastbound from Moss Creek, heading toward Hilton Head, that very first span, that then terminates at Pinney Island, is structurally deficient, not to the point where the public's in danger right now. I don't want to, I don't want to give that, give that impression. But he has indicated that if there is not something put into place where he knows that something is moving forward that's gonna address that, he's gonna step in and have the SCDOT do that three-lane span, that first, just that first span from Moss Creek to Pinney Island, done right away. Using money he has on hands. And so, you know, I spoke with him about that. And I'll share this with you all, and I think I have in the past, because it's important. It would not be a situation where the existing eastbound span during construction would be shut down or curtailed. You would have new construction to the south of that existing span. And you would not cut off the existing eastbound span until that new eastbound span was completed. So, you're not talking about, and I think the public needs to be reassured in that regard, you're not talking about constraining traffic to Hilton Head during the construction period. Moreover, the three-lane, if they went that route, and for me, that's a worst-case scenario if they went that route. Because I think it's a piecemeal solution and we'd lose the $120 million. And I think that's suboptimal. But it's important also for me to point out that if they did do that separate span, just that one span from Moss Creek to Pinney Island, three lanes to the south existing, that would not be inconsistent with a broader, longer-range plan. In other words, you're not creating something that then constrains your ability to do what had been contemplated, go the rest of the way to Hilton Head. You could do that at some future point if need be. Now, again, that's suboptimal. We got a good, solid financial plan on the table right now to handle one half of this. And I hope that this can be brought to a conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rees.
Senator, thank you very much. Mr. Moore, Mr. Frelix, thank you for being there on our behalf. You touched upon my thought. A while back, SCDOT, through John White and others, talked about coming in and just cleaning up, fixing up, repairing. You mentioned just a moment ago, a very compressed timeframe, two weeks, I think you said, that has to be addressed.
That's what, I did say that. Secretary Powell said to me, I said, "Well, give me an idea of urgency here." And he goes, "I need to know in a couple of weeks," is what he said to me. I mean, so, I'll let him respond more formally. I mentioned that simply to impart a sense of urgency here in terms of trying to get through these things.
Listen, this is almost eight years in the making, and we appreciate these efforts to clear this up. With that compressed time, whatever urgency he's under, which he'll explain, there's an awful lot of people on Hilton Head that will reach out to you within this two weeks to say, "Does it make sense that we take a pause, take the time to reassess what we're doing, since it's gonna be $500, $600 million project when we're done, to my colleague's point, and really assess what we're doing and do things more pragmatic, more like an engineer, if you will?" I watched that session today, and there seemed to be a little confusion on his part in my take, but I'm new to this, a year and a half in. Have you thought about that since we've been through all these gyrations for about seven, eight years? Step back, let them fix up that span, and take the next number of years to do the right thing and do it properly?
I guess my response, three responses to that. First of all, that's a policy decision for Beaufort County Council to make in combination with the town of Hilton Head. I mean, I'm a state senator. It's not for me to dictate what the bridge looks like, okay? I've always said that I had two objectives. One was to provide local governments with enough time to come up with a solution that they felt was theirs and not something imposed on it by Columbia. And second of all, to hold the financing in place for as long as I could. I mean, those two things, I think, are within the purview of what I can bring to this. If you want to have discussions about what do you want the bridge to look like, what's the width? I mean, things of that nature, that's a policy decision for Beaufort County Council to make in consultation with the town of Hilton Head. But I will say this. There was a referendum held, $80 million collected for this project. Okay? So, you've got that. Second of all, there was an application made and funds received, $120 million for this project. Okay? So, you know, you're way downstream on this. And you can have a discussion in regard to whether you want to do just that first span. And that's a perfectly legitimate discussion to have. And that may be where you end up being. From my perspective, it is suboptimal because we have a $120 million CIB grant. It's difficult to obtain them. I mean, you've got projects from all over the state vying for a scarce amount of money. Okay? That award, that $120 million, represents a lot of blood, sweat, and tears by a lot of people in this room to get that money. And so, that's the first point I'll make. And second of all, there was that $80 million collected because it was representative of the public that this bridge was gonna be completed. So, again, those are my thoughts in regard to what's an optimal solution. If you all decide you want to go another route, that's within your authority to do that.
Senator, I'll just close it out by saying this. I think it's always been an option. One of the many options was to just retrofit, clean up, and get it up to standard. I'm curious as to how the next two weeks will go. And you say suboptimal. I think if we jump back and we take a look at what's going on, we may see a major shift in inflation in the next number of years that would help us get more for our dollar if we actually step back and do the repair and fix. So, again, to everybody in this room and to who's listening, thank you for all you've done. And I appreciate your efforts.
Sure. We have three other council members who have questions. I'll start with Councilman Cunningham.
Thank you. Thanks for coming today as well.
Sure.
Because I have one comment to that and then a question for you. I'm pedal to the metal. I'm tired of kicking the can down the road. That's why we're in the position we're in we are. That was before I was on council. And while I was on council, it's just, it's time to get something together and we gotta figure this out. The more we kick it down the road, the higher it's gonna go. And there's definitely the very real possibility of, like you said, we lose the $120 million and we already owe it to our taxpayers for the $80 million collected in 2016. With that said, one of the things you touched on was Pinney Island. Do you think that is a deal breaker for the state? If that's something that wants to get done by the county?
You know, Secretary Powell, when there were concerns voiced when the proposal was put out there and the DOT said, "Well, this is gonna make us difficult to have eastbound access. There's gonna have to be a doubling back," and got a lot of blowback in regard to that. So, I called up Secretary Powell, and that's when he came forward with this design-build concept. He said, "There is a way to do this, and we will structure the design-build bid in a way that incentivizes bidders to come up with solutions on how to have that eastbound access to Pinney Island." I think that's a viable solution that's worked elsewhere. The ambiguity is created here that I think can be resolved is, it creates a little bit more uncertainty as to cost. Okay? And so, I think that the DOT and the DOT engineers and the people that do their finances can help maybe specify that with, you know, a little bit more precision. Now, it's not gonna be precise, but that was one of the things that was mentioned by Chairman White in my conversation with him this afternoon. And primarily, the reason he wants to be more specific there is that he wants to see if there's going to be a potential for cost overrun. And that then leads to his concern about identifying who's going to pay for that cost overrun. I think that one of the things that our delegation can do as these conversations move forward is we can work with the governor's office and also work with the DOT to try to find backstops. Maybe try to find other sources of funding. So, I think that's the value add that we as a delegation can bring. Again, that's what I said before to Councilman Rees. It's not in regard to making a final decision. It's in regard to trying to come up with the dollars to make it happen. And I'm confident, after having talked to Chairman White, Secretary Powell, Governor's Chief of Staff, they all want to see this happen. They are all motivated to make this happen. So, I want that to be the takeaway, along with the sense of urgency that's associated with addressing the concerns expressed.
Vice Chairman Taverne.
Do you have another question?
I mean, just to tack on to, I guess, a lot of the big reason behind that, I know it adds a lot of uncertainty. Is there any way we can, or you, when you discuss with them, that the reason behind it is, is there are plans, something from Pinney Island to better the state of South Carolina and the county, and possibly even Georgia? I mean, everyone knows about the ferry system that's been talked about forever. We already know that the landing's there for the public landing. And maybe it is the ferry embarkation. Maybe there's something for the state to use as a discovery area or a welcome center, whatever it might be, to be able to at least understand, maybe there are other avenues we can tap into for that part of the project. I don't know if it's a reach or not to say, but if it is something we are working with Georgia on, so they have a ferry system that comes out here, too. I don't know if that's something that goes across those lines or not that could be done. But whatever we can do or I can do to help, please.
Well, as someone who's been involved in this since it was first proposed to the CIB and driving up to the CIB and making the arguments for the $120 million all the way through now, I can tell you that the decision-makers in this, the CIB, the DOT, the governor's office, the general assembly, want to see this project happen. This project is going to happen, if you want it to. Now, if you all end up, you pull back and, to Mr. Rees's point, if you, as a matter of policy, decide you want to go a different direction, you're not gonna hear me say anything to the contrary. That's out of my lane. But in regard to the proposal you put forward, I feel confident about the ability to get the money in place.
Vice Chairman Taverne.
Hi, Senator, how are you?
Fine.
So, I had a couple of questions. I want to continue to go forward, just like Councilman Cunningham. I think it's been long enough. We need to take care of it. You made a comment that they want to know the order of the use of the dollars. County, state, CIB. Of course, the county would like the CIB first, the state next, and our dollars at the end because we're gonna be responsible for overruns. That's in the agreement somewhere. So, that, I'm not sure what they're looking for there. They probably want us to use county first.
That's what they're looking for.
State, CIB, third. Okay. And then, the other thing was to piggyback on Mr. Cunningham. Pinney Island, it's a design-build. There is potential for overrun there. And the county will be on the hook for that. So, that gives me angst, that whole thing about Pinney Island. But I am frustrated we're back at this again, and I want us to keep going forward.
Councilman Lawson.
Senator, thank you for being here. I appreciate you coming. And I'm with Mr. Cunningham, pedal to the metal. I think that's a phrase that you used, Logan. I think that we need to move forward with this as fast as we can. I have no problem with the county putting their money in first. Again, this is a project, we're gonna spend it, whether it's now or later. So, whether we go first or last, I have no problem with that. I think that, I lived on Hilton Head for six years before moving to Bluffton, and I've been here for 36 years. So, again, I lived on Hilton Head for those six years. We are one hurricane away from having that bridge not be operational. And that's the worst nightmare that anyone can talk about, is that ever happening. So, by delaying, by moving it later on, I mean, I think that we're way behind now. So, again, anything that, at least from my point of view, and representing Bluffton as well as, I represent the whole county, Hilton Head people as well, that we need to push this as fast as we can. And we appreciate your help. You've been on top of this, and you've done a great job. So, thank you.
Senator Davis, I had one question. Thank you for being here tonight. This is a mental announcement today to all of us. No matter where we live in the county, as I've said before, constituents in my district work on Hilton Head. They depend on Hilton Head. It's very important to us. But you made a statement about the IGA to maybe renegotiate that IGA. I wasn't clear on that.
Well, and I really wasn't clear either. But one of the concerns that Chairman White said to me was, we have never, in regard to amending an IGA, modified materially the scope of the project. This will be the first time that we have done that. And then, he made a comment along the lines of, we're not, the request wasn't to renegotiate the IGA. The request was to the IGA, the request was to amend the IGA. I, Tom Davis, inferred from that was that there is a distinction there, okay? And, you know, I'm just, you know, lawyers are alert for distinctions. You would think renegotiating, amending are the same things. Apparently they aren't. So I just throw that out for when the conversations occur with Mr. Moore and Mr. Phalix and with Chairman White, that you be sensitized to that particular legal issue and just so that you're prepared, that that's one of the concerns he has.
Appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And we look forward to getting to work very quickly. Do you want to say anything else, Mr. Moore?
So, as Senator mentioned, we're obviously going to engage with the CIB as soon as possible, staff will. We may have a meeting later this week is what we're looking at, and then we have something to bring back to council. We need to do a special call meeting, whatever it is to get it done, we'll make sure that happens.
I think all of us would love to have a special call meeting if we need to have that to get this done.
Absolutely. So we'll keep you all informed as we proceed. But from our standpoint, for now, we're going to continue to support the joint resolution position council took on that, and we'll negotiate, we'll have the conversation with the CIB about the order of dollars and other things, and to the extent we need to come back to you all to do an amendment, we will do so with the contract. Or not amend, but renegotiate, whatever the terminology needs to be.
Or the intergovernmental agreement.
Correct. Which is, the IGA is between the county and the state infrastructure bank, so.
Yes, sir.
And we also have an agreement with the OT as well on that project. So those agreements will obviously have to come back to council should those change materially.
We have another question?
Yes. Mr. Moore. So the meeting in a couple of days, what's the involvement level for Hilton Head Town Council and Mayor? I'm sure they're going to ask.
Right, and I know Senator Davis may weigh in on this. From my standpoint, my understanding is it's about the contract terms for the agreement that the county has with the state infrastructure bank. We could certainly, you know, involve the town, but I think it really, when it comes to modifying that contract, that's a council action. Unless you have anything to add on?
The contract is between the county and?
And the state infrastructure bank. That's true with all the other, with your county in Charleston, those are county to the state infrastructure bank agreements.
Do you have anything else for the administrator's report?
That concludes my report.
That was enough.
That's a lot. All right, moving on. We have a proclamation recognizing the week of May 18th through the 24th as Emergency Medical Services Week, and Councilmember David Bartholomew is going to read this, and do we have some people? We do have EMS here.
And if we could please have EMS come up to the front?
Yeah, come on up. More the mayor.
The more the mayor.
Thank you for being here. Make sure. Whereas Beaufort County is fortunate in having a highly trained and well-equipped emergency medical services, and whereas this emergency medical services is staffed by professional and experienced emergency medical technicians and paramedics who are on call day and night, and whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim May 18th to May 24th Emergency Medical Services Week, and this is signed by Alice Howard.
It's my honor to receive this recognition for EMS. We appreciate any time EMS is recognized. They do a very hard job. This is the excellent crew that we have working here, and we appreciate everything that you've done for us to provide us the vehicles and the tools to do our job to better serve the citizens of Beaufort County. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing the week of May 18th through the 24th as National Public Works Week. Councilmember Tom Reitz will do that announcement. And do you have some people here from Public Works? Jared's here. Oh, okay, we do.
Everybody could come on up. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here. I don't think there's one council member that has not worked with this crew, especially since this rain. Whereas the infrastructure facilities and services provided by Public Works play an integral role in managing and operating Beaufort County communities as well as building the quality of life, and whereas Beaufort County's Public Works Facility Management, Engineering and Traffic Engineering Departments oversee a variety of programs that directly impact daily life such as roads, drainage, solid waste recycling, litter, fuel management, stormwater, recreational water access, traffic, buildings and grounds. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of the community depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services as well as their planning, design, maintenance and construction is vitally dependent upon efforts and skills of Public Works Facility Management and Engineering officials, and whereas for over 65 years, the American Public Works Association has recognized National Public Works Week to be celebrated nationwide from May 18th through May 24th. Now, therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council does hereby proclaim May 18th to the 24th as Public Works Week, as signed by our chairman, Alice Howard.
Please say something.
Thank you there, Councilman Reitz. Yeah, thank y'all, Councilchairwoman Alice Howard, appreciate that. Thank y'all. Yeah, we, so we have a very strong team at Public Works right now. Just brought in a few here, this is not all of them. We have close to 140 employees fully staffed, so these are kind of our management team and our leadership at Public Works to do a very good job to keep the citizens of Beaufort County happy, and thank y'all for this again. Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. I always think of Public Works kind of like Ghostbusters, who are you going to call? And that's what usually happens in disaster time, is Public Works gets called, whether it's rain, stormwater, roads, whatever. Thank y'all very much for what you do. All right. At this time, we do have public comment, and I'm going to call them in order and call the second person up as the first one's coming up. So some of you may have noticed, we have a new form, hopefully to keep things moving quickly. Robert New is the first one, and after him is Dean Pence. If Dean Pence can go ahead and come forward. And if you will, Mr. New, state your name and your subject.
My name is Robert New, Wallace Landing Retreats, St. Helena Island.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't want your time to start yet. I want to read the public comment. We'll start you over again. I forgot. Every, I want to read this out loud. Every member of the public who is recognized shall limit their comments to three minutes. I know you know all this, Mr. New, but just as a reminder, observe the following protocol. Address the chairman, and in speaking, avoid disrespect to council and any personalities or names. Confining themselves to questions under the jurisdiction of council and be mindful and respectful of those who are present and others who may be watching on television. Now your time starts, Mr. New.
Thank you all for serving and such a fun job. Amusing, what we have is the mystery Pine Island developer and now law firm number six submitting basically the same request as two years ago, but low and behold, it has now been rebranded and repackaged as a downzoning. Seriously, who could oppose a downzoning? Now, humorously asking for more houses than last time, signs, slick websites, T-shirts all appear extolling the new improved downzoning. There's only one small problem. The application is actually to go from T2 rural with the CPO to T2 rural eliminating the CPO, just the opposite of a downzoning. As Planning Commissioner Member Dennis Ross stated last Monday, and I quote, "Just for clarification, this is not a downzoning, right? It is just a request to remove the CPO from this particular piece of land," end quote. Rob Merchant replies, "It's not a down, it's a downzoning request, but rather a proposed zoning map amendment to remove the CPO from the property." A bait and switch. Not fooled, the Planning Commission denial was unanimous. For a quarter century, the CPO has protected the Gullah culture, it is embedded in the comprehensive plan. You all strengthened the CPO in 2023. It is simple, no resorts, no gates, no gulf, for a reason. Don't let the dominoes fall. The Gullah community of St. Helena does not have expensive lawyers, PR consultants or freebies for locals to give out. They do have six generations of vibrant community married to the land. It is for all of us an obligation to fight and protect this unique culture. As stated by your Planning Commission, the request clearly does not adhere to counting requirements for a zoning amendment. Deny this request, send a clear message to this developer and all those who will surely follow that St. Helena is not for sale.
Thank you, Mr. New. Next is Dean Pence, and then after Dean Pence is Donna P. Cole, if she'll go ahead and come forward. All right. Mr. Pence?
Madam Chair, District 3. I'm Dean Pence, AKA Deander Wild, full-time resident conservationist and environmentalist. I support the CCL's overall mission, which I interpret to protect our waterways and shorelines from overdevelopment, abused pollution and ruination. Mr. Troppino proposes none of these, rather he's asking nothing more than the opportunity to live in peace and contribute to his community. The CPO has been used as intended as a control mechanism. It protects St. Helena Island from the mega developments that are happening right now, Sun City and Bluffton, many tracts of land in the Hardyville area. Regarding the Planning Commission, there is no other position than the letter of the law. A constructive solution, though, to permanently protect 347 acres of woodland, 30,000 feet of shoreline at Pine Island and the three adjacent waterways from the destroyers is vital. It's time to retune the CPO rule. Requests for unusual development must be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. Keep the intent, never allow mega developments, never. If Tuckahoe Wedd wants a putt-putt golf course, it is a golf course, but still. Future development proposals must stand on their own merit and prove worthy of St. Helena. The domino effect is precluded by addressing developmental proposals on a case-by-case basis. Now is the time for constructive edits. Place the CPO line so that it runs from the northwest corner along the island's western edge across the causeway to the southeast corner. That doable option keeps the mainland of St. Helena within the CPO and protected. The benefits of this cartography edit are enormous. Simply prudently adjusted, a small portion of the line saves Village Creek, Morgan River, Edding Creek and the Pine Island shorelines, watersheds and fisheries, a single action to provide opportunities for our youth, community and both to our local economy. The Cultural Center is the greatest gift Mr. Elvina Troppino proposes for the people, especially the young men and women of St. Helena, a place of safety, encouragement, learning and mentorship, a place where our islands used to be found sanctuary from drugs, crime, bullying and negative social pressures plaguing today's society. If through his generosity, the Gullah-Gi'chi Cultural Center helps today just save one, just one of our youth, it is priceless and worth every penny and every minute spent defending, abhor or against. So what is to be done? In my opinion, courageously. He asks that the county move the line to the western edge of Pine Island. Move the line. Good work is done, complication issues resolved, and though I do feel the CPO needs a tweak, okay, it needs flexibility. Pine Island is a first case-by-case. It sets a precedent for good stewardship for what a development should be. Double river buffers, you can't tell it's there if you're on the river. That's what we want. That's really what we want, is to protect our environment there, and we can do that. So it's a job well done. So I must say, when the dust settles, I hope everyone will bring something to the table that's constructive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Donna Cole, and then next is Mr. Arnold Brown. You might want to move the microphone down a little bit so we can, I mean, lean it down. There you go.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for allowing me this time and to give you some comments, and thank you for all your hard work. My name is Donna Cole. I live in the Delamo neighborhood, just minutes from Penn Center and the Coroner's MLK intersection, right next door to Pine Island and the St. Helenville entrance. I am not a paid actor or otherwise incentivized who lives elsewhere or has been recruited. I live right next door. I am one of dozens in my neighborhood and the thousands of others who have joined in support of the Gullah-Gi'chi and indigenous of St. Helena Island over the last several years. Anyone who tells you that everyone in this neighborhood supports the Pine Island Developers' representative with these resort plans is absolutely incorrect. I feel like that's just another strategy that he has employed. We recognize the historical significance and we fully support preserving and protecting this rural and culturally rich region of Beaufort County, regardless of the incomplete history of this property that has been presented by the golf course supporters. May I add, two times on the National Register of Historic Places and Congress adopted the Gullah-Gi'chi Cultural Corridor in 2006. My husband and I have been in the Low Country since 2014. We have followed the story from the beginning. The original purpose and intent of the cultural protective overlay zoning has been here since 1999, created by and for the people. It was necessary then, has been strengthened and approved and is still necessary now, obviously. Long-term protections for incompatible development for this very rich, nationally recognized and historical part of the Gullah-Gi'chi Corridor, which we are very lucky to have here in Beaufort County. I'm so thankful to the multitude of partner groups who have stepped up and all of the people for your sustained and diligent efforts. The continuous onslaught and use of the investors' big money to succeed is exhausting, as everyone knows, and attempts to divide the community on this issue are pretty difficult. We truly appreciate this county council and our Planning Commission for your continued support. You have followed the process and have upheld the law, which is supported by the Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, and we trust in you to continue to adhere to your wise decisions of holding these protections provided by the CPO on St. Helena Island. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Arnold L. Brown, and after him is Ann Ubelis, and after Ms. Ubelis is Carrie Major. All right, Mr. Brown?
Good evening, and thank you for your service to the Beaufort County and the people of Beaufort County as well. I have put on your desk 21 reasons to deny Pine Island's second development application. I'm going to try to cover that in three minutes. Ha ha. Actually, the next time you hear from probably a supporter or the investor for Pine Island, you'll probably hear him emphasize three things, which is new to his application from his original application. The first one is responsible density, or smart, growth, smart, and who can disagree to a word like reasonable, responsible and smart. The Pine Island development, the CPO, is already smart and is already responsible. It was designed probably over, what, 20, almost 25 years ago. It limited one house per three acres, no gates and no gulf. If you would ask, I think- If you would ask, I think if you would ask 20 people the definitions of responsible density, you'd probably get 15 to 20 different answers. Who should define responsible density? It should not be the developer, okay? It should not be the investor, but it should be someone else. The Fox should not design the hen house. There are areas probably in Beaufort County that need to be better designed. There are new homes going in on 42 inches lot, 42 feet, 52 feet, no garages, some have one garages. So there is room for improvement in certain neighborhoods, and I won't call them out. The attorney mentioned in the planning committee that the average person, employee on the golf course would make $80,000 a year. I'd like to hear more about that. That's just amazing. I worked on a golf course one summer on Paris Island, and I made a dollar and a quarter an hour. As far as the recreation center, that seems to be a quick pro quo. It is not for sale. The CPO is not for sale. That idea or suggestion was dead on arrival. I don't think we spent more than five minutes talking about that, and it's very little or no support for that. The other thing that is bothersome is using kids or using children for something like that. It's good that they come by and see how government works, but they're going to be disappointed in not getting a recreational center. So thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you have done. Thank you for all that you're going to do, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next is Ann Hubelis, and then followed by Ms. Major.
All right, the item I am addressing is Agenda 19 on today's agenda, is the first reading. I want you to take a good look at this map. On Agenda 19, you're looking to gain the right-of-way and easement on the properties on Middle Road, stretching from Brickyard Point all the way down to Walnut Hill. If you're looking at this map, the proposed sidewalks and multi-use walkways is outlined in the black pen. It starts at Brickyard Point where it forks from Middle Road, which is a dangerous curve. It comes around in front of Pusso Elementary School, which has another dangerous curve. It ends on Seagull. It crosses a busy roadway with no traffic crossings onto the other side down to Gator, which is maybe a couple hundred feet. It then jumps close to a quarter mile down to Marsh Drive. You have a hodgepodge of sidewalks, and a next one comes three-quarters of a mile down on Walnut Hill for only a couple hundred feet. This is a waste of taxpayer money. It is a waste of taxpayers' money when it comes to you using county personnel to do this research and come up with this paperwork. This was supposed to be a tabled project from the 2018. It is worthless. You have a whole slew of Middle Road with no sidewalk, and then sidewalk where it makes absolutely no sense crossing a busy roadway. We have a lot of building coming down at the end of Brickyard Point Road and down Middle Road, a lot of building. Traffic is increasing. You build a sidewalk here, you're going to only have to rip it up to widen the roadway. And then when you get even more residentials and businesses down this road, you're going to have to rip it up again because you have to make it wider to accommodate a bridge from the end of Brickyard Point to the Marine Corps Air Station. Why are you measuring three times and charging the taxpayers three times for a job you should be doing one and done? If you're going to widen that road, that's when you do the sidewalks, not now. At this point, the back and front course of the Marsh Course and the Royal Pines courses over Middle Road, the owner is looking to turn that into green space. So if you're going to put down a sidewalk through a half-mile between the two, the back nine and the front nine, put a sidewalk to connect the two green spaces. That makes sense, but this is a waste of taxpayer money. Also, there's a lot of change of property hands down Middle Road because the golf course may be up for sale. So now you're going to do research, and by the time you get done with the research and you're ready to start your project, you would have to do it all over again because the property has changed hands. Again, a waste of our taxpayer money. We're paying for these county employees, and you're going to waste it? Put that money into projects more worthwhile. And as for charging us, looking at doing another capital improvement project, putting a sales tax on the 2016, I'm going to ask you to take this consideration deeply. Consider doing the same thing the school board did and float bonds, and do not charge the taxpayer twice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Major, is next. And next is Kevin Dukes, and then William Smith.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for allowing me to come and speak before you. I'm on assignment, and my assignment is the Youth and Community Center. And I just want to thank Councilman Glover and Mr. Brown for their presentation last week when they showed the plans that they have for the Wesley Felix Complex there. The community came in and they reviewed it, and they also had great input, and we're so grateful again for Phase One that is happening. We're looking forward to Phase One being started, and the plans look great. The community was happy, except for one thing. Their comment was, "It's not large enough," that we're looking forward to Phase Two. So I thank you very much for it, and there's a scripture that says, "You have not because you ask not." But then there's another one that says, "Ask and it shall be given you," and that's what I'm believing, that we will not only have Phase One, but we'll have Phase Two. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Major. Next is Kevin Dukes. And William Smith, just after him.
Good evening, Council. Kevin Dukes, Harvey &amp; Batty Law Firm here in Beaufort. And I just wanted to speak briefly about the Pine Island plan. Obviously, as many of you know, a couple of you were there at the Planning Commission meeting the other night, and there are also some comments here today which are interesting. You know, while it may not have been what we were hoping for at the Planning Commission, it was what we expected. And because of actually some comments tonight with the way the process is set up, it was going to always go that direction. Because, as was pointed out, there was a request only to remove from the CPO and, as it was stated, just a zoning map amendment. So that didn't allow for the staff in their report or the Planning Commission to consider 95% of what we've proposed as a down zoning plan for this piece of property, and that's what's included in the development agreement. And so that is critically important because while some may come and use that as an opportunity to show doubt or to create confusion, I would tell you that that's exactly where we're moving next, is to eliminate that confusion, to create and to consider one plan. And that's why I am, you know, excited moving forward, moving forward to this body. This body has control over the development agreement and zoning map amendment. It will be considered as one project, which quite frankly, the entirety of the public thinks this is one project. They don't look at it as procedural pieces to fit together that we need to approve separately. And we've heard from staff that the development agreement is the vehicle in which the guarantees of the development which you want are secured, and that's exactly what we're talking about. And so we found out last week that Mr. Merchant has deemed our development agreement application complete, and so with that, we are looking forward to working with all of y'all on that and considering this as one project so we can really consider those really important aspects of the plan. That down zoning, that density reduction, those removal of docks, all those things, they couldn't even be considered by the Planning Commission, and so that's where we ended up. The other thing that I would ask you, if you haven't had a chance to see it already, is to look at the presentation. We go through a lot of those elements, and I can send you some of that information, but also pay attention to public comment because the public perception of this project is changing, and the public support for this project is growing. And as I've been involved with this, it reminded me of something Chairman McKellen that you pointed out early on when I was evaluating this project, when you mentioned to folks at public comment, did they realize what was going to happen if the base zoning was maintained? Do they realize it was going to be a residential community? And I saw people's faces, and they didn't. What we found out this past week, that there were actually 10 individuals who have talked to our team that said they showed up for that Planning Commission meeting in opposition, and they left in support. And they said they did that simply because they didn't know what was included in the plan before, and now they do, and now they support it. So it's that simple, and that's why I'm excited to get started with this. I'm excited to consider the plan as a whole, and I'm excited to work with all of y'all on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. William Smith? He is our last speaker unless someone signed up late? No? Okay.
Good afternoon, Council. It was great, let me stop by saying, it was a great meeting that we had, the school board council, I mean, the school board and the county council together. That's something I've been working on for the, since I got on council, that's something I ran on because there's a lot of things that are going on in this town that we should be working towards together. So I definitely appreciate that. I think the first meeting was, now I think, I believe it was, it was a success. Looking forward to the second one, and looking forward to continuously working together and making Beaufort a better place, beautiful place. Also, there was, also, Mr. Glover, you had a county, you had a community meeting on Tuesday, the sixth. Your community meetings are at the same times of our school board meetings, and I'd definitely like to get, like Ms. Major just came forth, and she was saying that what the community said, I had a community, a lot of people called me asking why I wasn't there. Mr. Glover, I've told you a couple times privately, I'm telling you publicly, those, when you have your community meetings during school board, it pulls away from the community, and then I also can't get there, and I'm also a constituent, and I would like to be there and attending to those meetings, and especially one is as important as what we just had in terms of recreation and students. I'd definitely like to be there. So please, if we could work together on that to, so that we all could be in the community, everyone from the community biz as well. Also, lastly, it was great that y'all had the EMS, that y'all showed EMS love tonight. But one of the questions that I have in mind, and we didn't get together, we didn't get to ask this when we had our joint meeting, was, I told you a while back that there was a student at Mary River High School who was on the football field for about 45 minutes. It took EMS about 45 minutes to get there. There was an EMS guy at that meeting, and he told me that we don't have enough buses. And when I say EMS bus, I say buses, I mean not school buses, as in EMS vehicles to move around the whole county, enough EMS vehicles to serve the whole county. So I say that to all these things that, all these proposal, these complexes that you're proposing. My mom said, "All money ain't good money." So what are you saying, Mr. Smith? I'm saying that we, the crime in Beaufort County in the last year has been atrocious. We're putting together people who have not used to being together. We have to do something about that. Does Beaufort Memorial Hospital have the manpower, if something, if we had a crisis in Beaufort, to partake and to successfully deal with it? If we, if we, God forbid, if we had a bad baseball game, Little League, and something else took place, could Beaufort Memorial Hospital handle that? So when y'all approving all of these buildings and all of these, allowing all these businesses to come here and to be able to make money, please think about that. Because I've come before county council for the last couple of months, and I've told y'all about the 38 kids under 25 that we've buried in this community. Eventually, we're going to have to do something about it. All money ain't good money, and I'll close with that. Please, we don't got the hospital, we don't got the EMS services, and that's because we actually don't have the law power. Let's think about that when we're making all these approvals of all these different apartment, excuse me, my tongue got tied, apartment complexes in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time, we're closing public comment, and we, number 10 on the agenda, we are liaison and committee reports. I'll start down at this end with Councilman McKellen. Do you have any reports?
No.
Not, Councilman Dawson?
No.
Councilman Bartholomew?
No.
Councilman Logan?
Cunningham?
No, ma'am.
Councilman Tabernick?
Yes, I do.
I know she does, yeah. That's good.
So I just want to reiterate what Mr. Smith said. We had a great first meeting with the school board. It is available on BCTV on demand, so everybody can watch it. There were some good topics discussed. Ms. Howard and I attended Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board Session, and I'm going to report out on what Beaufort County School District did. They held two, and Mr. Smith could have done this, two meetings with the community to go over their proposed budget, which is very important because that's a primary function. One was the 30th of April at Bluffton High, one was May 1st, Beaufort High. And then on their regular agenda, they had a few approvals of contracts, they celebrated Students of the Month, and what I found interesting was they reviewed updates from various committees, including the Operations Committee, and noted that from the 2019 referendum, all six active projects are complete with $4 million remaining. Of the 2023 referendum funds, all projects are green with go, with $182 million committed and $257 million remaining. They also had a long discussion on academic calendars for next year. Really good points, and I'm glad I don't have to make that decision. I also met with Dr. Rodriguez and CFO Tanya Crosby last week to get an explanation of their budget and military requests, and I will forward to all of our council members the information. They will be presenting to the Finance Committee on May 19th for our first reading with the school district budget. And then Allison and I spoke at the Beaufort Memorial Hospital groundbreaking event for their new hospital facility in Bluffton. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Dawson?
Yes, out of the Finance Administration Economic Development Committee, we have a couple of things on the consent agenda. One is upgrading the phone system, and then secondly, Mr. Smith, we actually are purchasing two Type I ambulances, so again, adding to that, and that's something that's been in the works for a while. And then also appointment of Dick Stewart back to the Accommodations Tax Board, as well as the reappointment of David Neelams to the Airports Board.
Thank you. Councilman Bassment?
No, no report.
Okay, Councilman Glover?
Yes, quickly, the meeting for the Natural Resource Committee is going to be on the 2nd of June. A place had not been determined yet, but hopefully we'll find a place for that meeting to take place. Did have a meeting with my community along with Mr. Dawson on recreation, and Mr. Brown was there. And Mr. Smith, I just need to let you know that he gave us to date the 6th and the 8th, and Gerald took the 8th first, so I was stuck with the 6th. So I just want to let you know that. But it was a good meeting and well-attended, and Mr. Smith, I will let you know that there's still opportunities for you to look at, review, and I'd be glad to share that with you, with Mr. Brown for your input, any comments you would have to make, I mean, you would like to make regarding that and stuff, but it was done, and there were about over 50-something people there in attendance. Thank you.
Before I forget, Ms. Brown, Councilman Brown, do you have anything?
Economic Development.
Economic Development meeting? Okay, you had one last week. All right. Councilman Reese?
One, very, very quick, I want to bring everybody back just for a brief moment to Mr. Harris' public works. Sarah, is that working, our video? Take 30 seconds or less. Last August, this group right here went out in earnest, and we're working with many communities all over Beaufort County with stormwater, and this one right here, you're seeing a video that I took this morning, and that water is actually flowing. You may not be able to see it, but this group that you met tonight that received that proclamation has been out unbelievably putting things together, getting these stormwater drains working properly, and I got to tell you, it's the first time in this community in probably 20-some-odd years that that water flowed like that. So this council, and there's a happy camper working with this team, and I'm telling you, we're coming together nicely, and to be out in the community getting things done like this that haven't been done in a long time, I'm darn proud and honored to be with this group, and I thank you all. I mean that. I mean that.
And again, we thank Public Works for all their hard work.
Big time.
I had one announcement on Thursday at 5:00. There's gonna be a Shellpoint Community Meeting, and we're gonna talk about the sidewalk on Broad River Road, and we're also gonna talk, update on stormwater in the Shellpoint Community. That will be from 5 to 6 at the Low Country Montessori School. No other announcements, we'll go on with the agenda. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilman Passment.
Second.
A second by Councilman Larson. Anything anyone wants to say about that? I think we've already talked about it. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, by show of hands? Show of hands, okay. The consent agenda is now approved. Moving on to number, a discussion will be held, request from the Coastal Community Development Corporation, or the CCDC, for financial assistance from Beaufort County to support their application to the South Carolina Housing Trust for financial assistance related to a proposed project to construct workforce housing in northern Beaufort County near Laurel Bay. We have Mr. Claude Hicks here and David Wetmore, if they would like to come forward.
Can I have that motion to have that discussion?
Can I insert something? Make a slight correction. Claude is certainly here, of course. Come on up, Claude. And Alan Wolfe is here, David Wetmore is unavailable this evening, and Alan is his partner, and he'll be coming in to talk about this. In any kind of a business proposition, there are also unforeseen things that occur that can cause a material change, and I think that's what we'll be hearing about tonight.
Okay. We had a motion for the discussion by Councilman Larson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Did you get the second?
Larry can do that if he'd like.
With no objection, we'll go forward with the discussion.
Thank you, Alan Wolfe, Chairman of the Board of the CCDC. Since our original request for the grant for the SC housing application in the Laurel Bay area, the access to our option for the balance of the land for additional development has since been lost. The developer engaged in affordable housing, multifamily developer, who is partnering, purchasing the additional land for workforce housing. So overall, a good thing for the county. This altered the parcel that we were working on and makes the unit count that we'd be chasing not 39, which we previously came to with, and it would drop it down to 32 units. Now, these changes make our deadline of June 2nd for SC housing unattainable, so we are going to ask for a deferral of this agenda item. We will be working for a more suitable parcel north of the Broad and intend to seek your support, obviously, once we have a viable project, to continue to address the workforce housing shortage. We really appreciate from the Board and the team at the CCDC, the council's willingness to move quickly based on that deadline for SC housing of June 2nd, to just consider this opportunity for us, and I'm sorry that it didn't come together in a better way.
Mr. Hicks, do you have anything to add?
Just very briefly, Finance Committee asked us to look at three things. Number one was the financial viability of the project. Number two, we looked at the competitive nature of the project. And number three, we looked at the long-term viability of the project. On all three instances, it was made much more difficult once the adjacent land was sold. There were some other things that would have made that application difficult. I want to applaud CCDC for looking at it. It's very hard, being a developer for 30 years, there was never a project I thought I couldn't do, but they looked at this and saw the writing on the wall and asked for the deferment. So I applaud their decision, and we support it. Thank you.
All right. So at this time, do we need a motion to defer, or just go forward?
No.
Discussion, it was just a discussion. We appreciate your.
Alice, can I just make one comment?
Yes, sir.
I think when one door closes, another door opens, so we'll be looking forward to a visit back here again, once you locate some additional, perhaps even better land that you'll be able to develop. Thanks, Alan, and thanks, Claude.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Moving on, we have ordinances for third reading. I'll turn it over to Vice Chairman Tabernick.
Ordinance 2025/20 is an ordinance to amend Beaufort County's budget ordinance for fiscal year '25. It was ordinance number 2024/25 to amend Section 3, County Operations Revenue, Paragraph B, Capital Improvement Fund, and Section 4, County Operations Appropriation, Paragraph B, Capital Improvement Fund, and add Appendix A and Appendix B to the fiscal year '25 budget. The vote at the first reading on April 14th was 10-0. Second reading and public hearing was April 28th, the vote was 9-0. So I'm looking for a motion for this.
Will make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Passment, second. Second, Mr. Lawson. We don't need a review of this. Anyone have a question on council or comment? All right, then I'll call the vote. All in favor of this ordinance as read, please raise your hand. And there's Paula. Thank you very much. Ordinance 2025/21, an ordinance to repeal ordinance 2021/24, which established a solid waste and recycling enterprise system. The vote at first reading on April 14th was 10-0. The vote at second reading and a public hearing on April 28th was 9-0.
I will make that motion.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. Passment, second.
Second.
Mr. McElhan, second. Is there any discussion or question from council? We've already chewed this one up, yes.
Just gotta give an explanation what this is. At one time, we're looking at doing a tax, basically, to have it fall under, but that is not the case now, so again, we're just doing some tidying up of our accounting practices with this. Is that correct, Ms. Harriet?
Correct. We're just taking solid waste department and moving them back into the general fund. In order to do so, we need to repeal this previously passed ordinance.
You feel like Groundhog Day, you've talked about this four times now.
I think I can just hit play now at this point.
Okay, any question for this?
I have a question.
Yes.
Prior council, we actually put the solid waste enterprise, recycling enterprise, together for anticipation of the closing of the, excuse me, I'm getting hoarse, of the current landfill. All right, and so now we are rescinding the enterprise, and so my question is, all right, are we anticipating, well, let me phrase it this way, what's the life expectancy, are we anticipating now of the landfill before we find ourselves in a position, again, where landfill might close, and then we got to look at, perhaps, starting a enterprise again?
Yeah, so the enterprise, the goal of the enterprise is to produce the revenue, and the revenue was coming from Holden Source, whether that's the transfer station or MRF or recycling activities. The transfer station, we still have costs associated with that, and the landfill, when we started the process, there was an expiring permit for expansion. That waste management, all of our waste in Beaufort County goes to the waste management's landfill just in Jasper County. They've since got an extension. I'm not sure on the timeline of that extension, but I will get that answer and get that information out. We're still looking to pursue, to see if the transfer station is in our best interest in portions of the county, particularly like the areas that produce more waste in the southern part. So we're gonna continue to look at that, as well as look and coordinate with our neighbors in Jasper and Beaufort, or Jasper and Hampton and Colleton that we have before. Talk to them.
All right, keep us posted.
Will do.
Anybody else question or comment? All right, thank you. Let's have a vote. All those in favor of this ordinance as read, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Ordinance 2025/22 is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of drainage easement, TMSR510 007 000 0116 0000. The vote at our first reading, April 14th, was 10-0. The vote at our second reading, which also included a public hearing on April 28th, was 9-0. Can I have a motion for this ordinance as read?
I will make that motion.
Oh, Mr. Passment's on a roll tonight, thank you.
Second.
Second, Mr. McElhan. Any question or comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So let's take a vote to approve this as read. Raise your hand if you're in favor, and it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, 2025/23 is an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of an easement encumbering property identified as TMS number R300 035 00A 0004 0000, and R300 035 00A 005 0000. The vote at first reading on April 14th was 10-0. Vote at second reading and public hearing on the 28th was 9-0. Can I have a motion for this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passment.
Second.
And Mr. McElhan, are you guys tag-teaming tonight?
Right.
What's happening? All right. Are there any questions or comments on this one? Okay, let's have a vote to approve this ordinance as read. Raise your hand if you approve it. All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to ordinances for second reading. 2025/24 is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of tax map serial numbers, and they are all included in the ordinance. I'm not gonna read them all, because there are lots of numbers, also known as North Widgeon Fee.
So moved.
Okay, the vote at first reading and public hearing was 9-0. Moved by Mr. McElhan?
I will second that, and I would like to amend this motion.
All right.
To defer this action until the next county meeting.
I'll second that motion to amend.
Thank you for that. Let's vote on the amendment first. Anybody have a comment or question, council? All right. All those in favor of the amended part of this ordinance? All right, thank you.
To defer.
To defer, yes.
One no.
Oh, there's one no? Who is it?
Me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't even look at him.
I appreciate that.
Sorry.
I'm used to it.
Okay, now back to the original motion, correct?
Yes.
All right, the original motion, and that was to?
To defer.
To defer. So we already voted on that part.
It's the original motion as amended.
As amended, okay. Yes, and it's Mr. Passment again.
Yes.
And Mr. McElhan again.
I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you so much. This is very easy for record-keeping. Anybody have a comment or question? All right, thank you. Let's take a vote of hands on that one. Thank you very much. And opposed? One opposed. Mr. Dawson?
I'm in favor.
He's in favor, and we got Ms. Brown. One opposed. All right, so let's see, we are on?
18.
2025/25, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a permanent utility easement for a portion of right-of-way owned by Beaufort County known as Palmetto Bluff Road, located in Bluffton Township. The vote at our first reading on April 28th was 9-0. This is a public hearing. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passment, second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McElhan. This is a public hearing, so anybody from the public wish to comment on this proposed ordinance? Now would be the time. Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody from council have a question or comment? All right, thank you. Then let's take a vote to approve this ordinance as read. All in favor? All right, thank you. Okay, ordinance for first reading, oh, Lord. 2025/26 is an ordinance authorizing the county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of right-of-way and/or temporary construction easement properties as shown on Exhibit A, pages 1 through 8, for Big Estate Road, Middle Road, and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive sidewalk projects associated with the sidewalks and multi-use pathways, safe routes to schools projects. Exhibit A, pages 911, for Ladies Island Middle School Access Road Project associated with the Ladies Island Corridor Traffic Improvement Project. This is a public hearing, so can I have a motion for this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passment. The rest of you are gonna have to be quick on this.
I'll second.
Oh, Mr. Glover seconded it.
I had a question for, I think some of this is in Councilman Bartholomew's district.
Yeah, and I believe we discussed a little bit during committee on this one. I believe y'all are just on a, am I correct on this, y'all are gonna close out the design phase, and then when y'all bring forward the new priority list, this is gonna be removed from that?
Well, so that would be up for discussion. What we owe council is to come back on the 2018, we had a workshop with 2018 and future in March, and that we would come back with a final list from staff for council to consider. When we do that, we could take place there, whether we want to pull Middle Road out of this now or not. But essentially, what this is, is the authority for the administrator to go negotiate right-of-way on the next bunch of projects that are ready for right-of-way acquisition on pathways in Ladies Island. And as far as the design, this is the next phase to complete the design and the permitting. Now, whether we execute the ability, this just gives us the ability to start negotiations on Middle Road, we can pause. So you can either include it in this as it's written, and we just pause on that till we bring the resolution back to council for full consideration, what we're doing in 2018, or you could remove it from this item if you chose to.
Well, I guess what would staff prefer on that front? I mean, y'all are the ones working on the project.
Yeah, I think our preference would be to leave it as included. We will just internally not act upon acquiring right-of-way on that until we hear from council what you'd like to do with that road. But that way, if you decide to go forward with that road, we already have that action, we don't have to come back for this action here.
I mean, that particular project, I'd say leave in for, like you just suggested, leave it in right now, but I do think it is a project that doesn't make sense to move forward as a priority.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Anubella spoke about this one, so we'll have that record. Mr. Smith, come on, come forward.
Just a quick question. This is not the right-of-way in front of Ladies Island Middle School, is it? Coming, going on to Taylor Allen, is it?
No, this is back near the roundabout, going down Middle Road.
Okay, okay, I just want to thank you, thanks for that.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead.
Public hearing part. Oh, sorry, I thought that was the only person speaking.
Anybody else in the public on this ordinance? All right, I'll close public hearing. County council, questions and comments? Go ahead.
I have a question. With regard to the detailed map that was given to us during some comments from Anubellus, has all of, have all the comments that she expressed been investigated with regard to what she sees as the conflicts with regard to all of this right-of-way that's being accepted?
So this right-of-way is where we are in our plan development, so there are some concerns as far as future widening of those, as far as some crossings and stuff. We would, this, it's all on one side of the road, as is proposed right now. We would have to work with DOT where we make crossings to go across the road, and that's still to be designed and fully detailed out. But this, what's proposed in these exhibits, is the necessary right-of-way to accommodate the pathway as presently designed on the one side of the road. I don't know if that.
So as presently designed, are any of the defects that were pointed out, or criticisms that were pointed out, incorporated into the current design?
She has pointed out some things that are included, I guess, let me think how to say this best. Some of the things are beyond the scope of the project as far as a bridge connecting to Ladies Island all the way to behind the air station. That's not part of this project or is being conceived. So this project is just for the right-of-way that would be needed on the existing road without any future proposed widening and the necessary right-of-way to accommodate that. So some of the concerns that were presented are beyond the scope of the sidewalk project that's proposed.
Any other comment, Mr. Glover?
Yes, she did express, and I saw that for the first time, because I really didn't look at Middle Road that well, but it looks very fragmented, pieces here, pieces there, and I was kind of concerned.
Some of the sidewalks within the right-of-way, so where we have, these are 60% design drawings, and so the right-of-way that's of need, or not just right-of-way, but easements or construction easements, is dependent on the topography as you go around the road, so there'll be some more needed on some roads, or some parcels than other parcels. So there will be some more needed on some roads or some parcels than other parcels, and that's the explanation behind that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question? All right, thank you. Let's take a vote on approving this ordinance as read. All in favor? Thank you. All opposed? Did Paula, okay, Mr. McAllen, all right, thank you. All right, we're going to go to 2025/27. An ordinance appropriating funds from the state ATX funds as recommended by the state ATX Funds Committee in compliance with the requirement of South Carolina Code of Laws. Voted Finance Administration Economic Development Committee on April 21st was 7-1. This is a public hearing, so can I have a motion for this ordinance as read?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
I'll do that.
Mr. Glover?
A second, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to discuss this disbursement of public ATX funds? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I will go to members of council. Questions, comments? Anybody other than me I'm going to make a comment? Anybody else? Mr. Glover?
No, just one comment, is not concerning the motion that's on the floor, but the Spanish Moss Trail and the committee, and I know Ms. Howard's a part of that, have connection to it and stuff, it's open, they're proposing some things open for children, and all I would want to say is that I would ask them to look for parking space in the future so that students from various schools can actually get a feel for the Spanish Moss Trail. It's a beautiful trail, and we would love for parking to be incorporated somewhere. I don't know how, I don't know where, but would love for parking to be incorporated. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Well, that would go to the Spanish Moss Trail group. Any question or comment on the information? I have a couple of comments. I sat through the presentations, there were 17 of them. I sat with the committee as they discussed every one. I want to call your attention to a few of these. You will notice in your backup that some of them are very specific as to how they're used. I really like the Royal Sound, Port Royal Sound Foundation, they're going to do a dock renovation and for comfort and safety of their guests. I look at the Beaufort History Museum, they requested $72,700. They were recommended to receive $30,000 contingent upon the funds used exclusively for marketing and that they utilize the CVB. Some of these asked for all kinds of things, and the committee said specifically for marketing. So that will be when they start asking, remember, they get the first half upfront, then they have to submit receipts, and then they have to get the second half and then a review. So when they come back, we would look at that. You have Historic Mitchellville Freedom Park, which, again, the county worked with Hilton Head to purchase through Green Space. You will notice they asked for $35,000 for two events, that was the drive-through Holiday Lights and the Juneteenth Celebration. The committee is recommending $20,000 contingent upon it all being used for marketing. If they can't come back and prove they use it for marketing, they won't receive those funds. Also, the Symphony, Hilton Head Symphony Orchestra asked for $25,000. They came back after being denied in November. They basically said, we've always gotten it, why can't we get it again? The recommendation is $10,000 from this committee. This one I objected to because it is on Hilton Head Island. It will generate ATX for Hilton Head, not necessarily the county, and the committee would like this organization to explore expanding multi-location. They told the group, you should do something for Beaufort. You can come to Waterfront Park, you can do a symphony there. In my opinion, they should have required it to get the $10,000, but this is the committee's recommendation. And then you had, there was one other one, the Favor Corp, it's on page 391. The application was for $15,000. It is a one-day festival of dance, line dancing, and they are going to get, they're recommending $10,000 contingent on all the funds being used for marketing. This group did not apply to Hilton Head. It is in Shelter Cove, so it will be on Hilton Head. They said they didn't apply to them, and if the, they can't, I don't know that they'll make what they need, so that $10,000 is for marketing only. And then we did contribute to the Beaufort County 250 Committee. There was a request for matching funds, so that's there. This committee worked very hard on this, and so we're looking for you to approve this ordinance to dispense these funds. Anybody question, comment? If you want to see the applications, they're all on the Dropbox. They will boggle your mind, but it's okay. All right, any other question? No, then I will take a vote. All in favor of approving the recommended amounts from the committee for state ATX? Okay, that's eight, nine. I'll not approve two. It's nine to two, the motion passes.
You got me as an approver, by the way?
Pardon me?
I was an approver, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Logan and I were the Debbie Downers. 2025/28 is an ordinance to amend Beaufort County's budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025 to correctly reflect the fund 4,000 CIP budget. This is a public hearing, so I'd like a motion to, for this ordinance.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Passamit. Second?
I'll second it.
Oh, Mr. Bartholomew jumped in there, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to come forward and talk about this ordinance? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Anyone from council have a question or comment? This will be for Ms. Harriet. And this is a first reading, so you can ask her what you like.
We're good.
You want to talk about it there?
I think we put it through enough last time.
Yeah, I think you went through this.
I did. We did.
Anybody have a question for or comment? Ms. Brown? All right, then we will call for the vote. All in favor of accepting this ordinance as read? Raise your hand. Okay, that's everybody. Thank you for standing up anyway. 2025/29 is an ordinance to make appropriations for county government and special purpose districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 25, and ending June 30, 2026. This would be to levy taxes for the payment thereof, to adopt service and user fees, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county, and other matters related thereto. Oh, Mr. Lawson made that motion, second?
Wow, second, wow.
He jumped you this time, jumped in front of you.
Yes, he did. Well, he's chair of finance, he should.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we will open this to discussion or questions from the council. And we've already gone over this last week, but maybe other questions arose. So Ms. Harriet's on duty for this. Is she going to get off easy again? Anybody?
Coffee's on her next week.
Oh, dang.
Would you tell the public, I saw your release about the fact that this does not increase millage. Do you want to make that comment?
Correct. We did a lot of reallocation of our millage in fiscal year 26 proposed budget so that we would not have to increase millage or taxes for our residents. So we were able to adjust based on the 59.5 mills we currently have. So pretty significant budget. We brought back solid waste millage with it, so that kind of helped, and then we just did our flat rate increase of 1,885 and 943. So we were able to get everything that we discussed from February forward implemented in this budget. That includes the EMS fourth shift, that includes bringing the sheriff's salaries up to, I think it's $60,000 starting, as well as the
Solicitor's office.
Solicitor's office commitment to do 1410 per capita, which is the state average. So we were actually able to pull off some really big feats this year with no tax increase, so.
And just to note, on the May 19 finance committee meeting, which these two gentlemen lead, that will be outside agencies, and we will have discussions on those.
Correct. You will have, we're putting the package together now for the 19th meeting, but you saw in your summary in your budget that you received at the special finance committee meeting, a summary of what was submitted, what was requested, what the administrator and I sat down and felt like was appropriate. So keep in mind that anything the administrator recommended column is based on, what this ordinance is based on, those cuts and/or funding.
Any question or comment? Yes, Mr. Glover?
Yeah, just because you allowing us to talk, so I'm going to talk. I was very impressed with EMS when we changed from a 2448 to 2472, needing more employees, et cetera, et cetera, but the budget really didn't increase much. So I was, that was, to me, I was really impressed with that and stuff. There are a couple of small, and I don't know whether you call these outside agencies or not, but the salt and water conservation, that's an outside agency?
Correct.
So they'll be coming next week?
They'll be presenting that week, but they are on your summarized list for all outside agencies. You have two pages there, outside agencies that just ask for a flat rate, and then you have mill-receiving entities on the second page.
Right, right, so I'll just wait, I'll hold mine from, until, you know, until
Right, all the rest of the outside agencies will be presenting next week, so you can ask them any question you would like.
Thank you.
Anybody else question or comment? All right, this is first reading, so all in favor of approving this ordinance as read on first reading? And Yes, unanimous, okay. All right, you're off the hook, Ms. Harriet.
I'm out.
Okay, we're going to move on to resolutions, but I'd like to entertain a motion that we extend our time because we are going to have to go back into executive session.
I'll make the motion.
For, till when, time? We don't give a time? But it's for both meetings. All right. We have a motion to extend our time, pass at 8:00?
I'm not seconding that.
Do we have a second?
Really?
I'll second.
Give your jack a back.
All in favor of extending our time beyond 8:00? Let's do a head count, do we have?
It's everybody.
No, it's not everybody.
York, you voting for this?
You always say yes. You know, since we changed our meeting from 5:00 to 6:00, I mean, it makes sense to go beyond. Yeah, so
I think it was unanimous, right?
No, Joe, no, Joe was a no.
All right.
Was he the only no? I think so. All right.
Who's a no?
Joe.
Mr. Passamit.
Didn't speed it up fast enough with all the first yeses.
All right, we're moving on to resolutions. This is a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Beaufort County School District for the use of their three swimming pools.
So moved.
All right, and we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Passes unanimously? All right, that was good, easy. All right, the next resolution is 2523, resolution updating the Beaufort County Freedom of Information Act policy.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Passamit? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any discussion or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? And Ms. Brown? Okay, that is unanimous. All right. Resolution 2025-24, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents from the Beaufort County Economic Development Corporation to purchase 117 acres of property located at 60 John Meeks Road, Seabrook, South Carolina in Lubbock with tax number R 700, 037, 000, 0181, 000, R 700, 037, 000, 0182, 0000. And then there's others to follow. All in favor?
So moved.
Motion, I second it.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? By sign of hands, and that is unanimous.
Yes.
And we will now go back, I need to adjourn this meeting, and we will go back into executive session. There may or may not be items out of executive session. And thank you.